All righty, I call this meeting to order September eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Blessings. Mr. Gibson?
Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which assumes one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call. Here.
Here.
Here. Here, here, yes. I was ready for the Eggers. Navarro.
President.
Thank you, Mr. Zinnian announcements. You got quite a few, don't you?
I can start. Commissioner Eglund and I were fortunate to go to Santa Barbara for the past few days and went to many sessions that had a great deal of information that we can bring back as we're doing our duties, a lot of legislative updates and things that we can do with our ordinances to make them better and streamlined. And there's so much that you really can't go into detail or we'd be here for five hours. But it's something that we'll be initiating in the coming months, a lot of positive change, I think, for the county.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree, I agree. We had a good drive down and back, no congestion. Caltrans is working on the roads like crazy. So I agree with Robert. We had an excellent selection of different sessions that addressed what Gavin Newsom has been signing on his desk, what is coming down the tubes for counties to facilitate low and extremely low income, to work with fees, to streamline CEQA process, to make things easier to move forward with less expense to the citizen applicant and to developers as they work with counties. So looking at all of it, it was, you know, it's like I have so much digesting here that I am, yeah. But I'm very grateful that the county allowed us to, or supported our going down for this. And I would recommend it for everybody, the rest of the planning commission as well as Parks and Rec Commission, they have another conference that they could go to.
Staff.
One in Sacramento.
Staff as well would benefit from it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, that's my report.
Nothing for me.
All right, we go to the public comment. If there's anything that you want to say that's not in the agenda, you come and speak for three minutes, as long as it's not in the agenda. Okay.
I still want to speak to this item here. Hi, Robert Robe, three forty Dante Robus. As Robert mentioned, he just went to a conference and he talked about revamping ordinances in the county. And the ordinance that I'd like you to look at or ask staff to look at is our sign ordinance. Right now, there's a lot of blight, I feel it's blight, on Highway one oh one at the one oh one livestock property. There are six billboards within a half a mile stretch on that property. And there's two other signs and a seventh billboard going up. I know we have a billboard ordinance, but, and I know there's a state law about billboards, fifty-two seventy, I think it is. But we as a county and cities, we have a right to have stricter ordinances. And within the general plan, we've been talking about putting signs at the north end of the county and the south end of the county at one oh one. And there comes a time when it becomes serious blight. And I don't know what the answer is, but I know that six billboards within a half mile stretch to me is blight. Most of them are pretty up, put up pretty decorative, if you could call it decorative. The one that is just put up just now has no screening towards our neighborhood. And right now, I was looking at a beautiful hillside, now I look at the back of a billboard. I sent my complaint in with the county. I actually emailed Valerie and I emailed, or I emailed Anthony Battello and I asked him to forward to Valerie because I'm concerned about it. If there's nothing you can do about it, my solution to that problem would be to ask the owner to at least plant some trees behind it. I mean, I worked for the city of Monterey, we used to say, paint it green, you know, that helps. But something, because it really sticks out. So I would ask you to ask the county staff to seriously critique the sign policy in ordinance, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Then we close public comment. And anything on the consent agenda?
Uh, no.
Not for the public hearings? No, not even a certificate of posting? Oh, move forward.
So acknowledged.
Acknowledged. Okay. Okay, then we go to the regular agenda. County, this is number one.
With your indulgence, I'll make this report from my desk, sorry. With your indulgence, I'll make this report from, from the desk rather than approaching the podium, but the Board of Supervisors is considering the acquisition of property on Buena Vista Road, approximately three hundred feet west of the city limits. It's an opportunity to acquire this property that's come to their attention. And the acquisition of property by the county is, has to undergo a general plan conformance review, so it's being referred to the planning commission for your review and report to the board. The property is, been subject to a recent lot line adjustments. It's approximately six point three acres, larger than is shown on the county GIS map. It is primarily vacant agricultural land. There is an existing old residence that's, I believe, currently unoccupied on the portion that was added to the property as part of the lot line adjustment. And it is, has a general plan designation of agriculture and a zoning designation of agricultural productive. So under the current policies, and it is not in, it is outside the sphere of influence of the city. So under the current policies of the general plan, the use would be limited to those within the agricultural use categories. So that, and for any other use to be made for, of it, it would need to either be annexed into the city or a general plan amendment. So that is the, the essence of the draft resolution for your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners?
Yes, I was reading.
Maybe show the public comment. Anybody want to speak on that item from the public? Okay, let's take it back to.
It says presently, the county is anticipating that this project is to be purchased and held until a future use of the property is identified. There's no funding available for development of the property at the present time, and there has been no specific use identified by the board for this project. And so I'm assuming that it is falling into line with some good purpose that is with the general plan.
To my chair, Gibson?
No comment.
I guess my only question through, through the chair is, as we review this, again, the request is to review that this is, you know, the, the, the current general plan is consistent with the proposed purchase of this property. In terms of if the county goes ahead and decides to purchase the property, what, what's the process? Does that come back through the planning commission? Or by, by our review and approval, is it really up to the board supervisors to go ahead and, and make the purchase?
Again, the purpose of the review is simply limited to what is the consistency with the general plan and not whether or not to purchase the property. That's a matter within the discretion of the board. It's, I believe, anticipated that there will be a due diligence period and which the county staff will be evaluating the, the property for potential acquisition. And then if the board decides to go ahead, then to acquire the property.
But if they decide to acquire the property, does that decision have to come back to the planning commission to review and approve? Or is that done by, by the board?
That's simply at the board level, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead. Through the chair, what I think is interesting here is that we're kind of, what's the purpose? What was the price and things like that? What we could have said here, had it been the case, but it's not, is are we buying a problem property that's got code enforcement issues, it's got this, or it's the result of some da, 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 da? Well, this property is absent all that and we don't have a proposed use for it. And the mere, the mere statement that, you know, what the general plan, the land use designations are, are things that could occur on the property, although there's just no proposal. So the other side of that is, would we need to correct a zoning violation? Would we need to correct something that was inconsistent with the general plan? And that's not the case with this property. But without hearing that contrast, you go, what do you have to grab on to? And it is really just pretty much a straightforward.
So through, through the chair, so then this is just a required procedural matter then, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
What's, uh, purchase price on the, or have they haven't kept an agreement?
There's not a, a final agreement, there are negotiations ongoing. Again, that is not relevant to the issue of what the general plan consistency of potential use of the property is.
The reason I ask that is the city purchased some property and pay way over the value of it. Is the county going to get into that predicament?
Well, the, the purchase price, I guess, is being reviewed by the, and advice being given by the assessor's office as to the value and the appropriate purchase price, it's under discussion.
I mean, it's going to be, from my opinion, that piece of property should value about four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand for a six acre parcel. That's a going rate for residential, which is own. I mean, I wouldn't want to see the county spend three million dollars for that piece of property.
Again, that would be a matter within the discretion of the board. I, I don't believe that's the case, so.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
Am, am I correct in that this property is right on, on the San Benito River? That little corner?
No, the, 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 I don't have an aerial view of it. It's not, the floodplain of the San Benito River is significantly south of that. There's a, an area that's mapped within the one hundred year floodplain that is significantly south of the property boundary. From review of the GIS and the layers.
She may be referring to, to.
Yeah, what is this squiggly area?
Because here's the floodplain, but that sure looks like something.
I can't read anything.
Well, there's a, there's a contour line and of course, the, the, the area of the San Benito River, or the course of the San Benito River shifts from time to time.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so it's, it's a meander, kind of a bench, sort of there.
Yes, that would be an appropriate description, yes.
Okay.
Through the chair, my question would be, being that it's zoned right now as agricultural productive, and I know this is more of a procedural matter, but I guess out of curiosity, if in the future it is purchased and they decide to do or propose some sort of development project, is that going to come back to the planning commission for a rezoning?
Yes, it would require, well, depending on the nature of it, there are some, some uses such as agricultural worker housing. That can occur on agricultural productive land. But there, but a more conventional residential development would require both a general plan amendment and a zoning map amendment, both of which would have to come to the planning commission for a report before action by the board.
Thank you.
Another question will be, the, the purchase price will be public, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Hopefully it's not overpriced.
Based on my understanding, it is, based on my understanding, it's, it's within the range that you are expressing an opinion.
From my past experience from, you know, city and county seem to pay more for land and the real value.
Right.
Okay. So we have motion for?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty nineteen dash X, a resolution of the planning commission of the county of San Benito determining that the proposed acquisition of APN zero one nine dash two three zero dash zero zero two is consistent with the general plan.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we go to number twos, tentative subdivision map. Michael?
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Michael Kelly, Associate Planner. I'm here to talk about this project, tentative subdivision map oh nine eighty-two at two forty Cole Road near Oromas. This property is this property here, along the one oh one corridor. You would reach it going, by going down to San Juan Road, turning on Cole Road, and here is the property. And when you get there, you find this. It's somewhat hilly, grassy land with scattered trees and it's among five acre lots, some, some larger than five acres, but generally residential, some much larger than five acres, but like I said, generally residential. And the property already has the existing buildings that compose two forty Cole Road at the bottom of the hill here, along Cole Road with this creek here, and then this open area right now that is proposed for, proposed for this map that's subject here tonight. And here's Ricardo Drive, and it goes uphill and reaches a peak right about here that would be access to the property. And this is the map that is proposed here with, there's Cole Road, there's Ricardo Drive, and building sites here, 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 there, and there, and there, four of which would be accessed off this court here, serving four lots, and the other two directly accessed off Ricardo Drive, one longer drive here, and this would require grading to go along with this. And if you go to this site, you would see this. This is looking eastward on Ricardo Drive at the, roughly the southwest corner. And in this location, you'd see a house here and a house there and a house there and three more that are out of view here. This is just getting closer up to the property, it's kind of almost the same view as before, but you see the grasses there and the scattered trees across the property.
Mike, could you lean into the microphone a little bit more? Thank you. Just like to capture your voice.
Okay. Looking westward on Ricardo Drive, you see the neighbor to the west, and there are more neighbors, but you can't see them because they're over the horizon here. And Ricardo Drive slopes downward here, and so does the rest of the land. Back here, this is where Cole Road runs through a valley. And going further down Ricardo Drive, you reach this spot where the, the four lot drive would connect to Ricardo Drive, and it would cut into this slope in a way that looks kind of like the way Ricardo Drive itself cuts into the slope, goes below grade, a natural grade a bit, and this drive would do the same for a little while and then reach the natural grade. And again, just looking across the land, and here is where Cole Road runs, and here is the existing building of, one of the existing buildings of two forty Cole Road. Here is, looking westward on Ricardo Drive, this is County Car, this is what I use to get to the site and take these pictures. And you can see that maybe this gives you an idea of the existing width of Ricardo Drive. About three of the, three of the cars could probably fit side by side, so it's more or less at the, what's expected of the, the width of the road. So that's built, maintenance of the road is a different matter, and I'll get to that, but, but it's pretty much built as it is. Just another view of the hillside where I believe there would be a house up this way, and then there would be another drive that would reach a house kind of behind the tree, and then another one just at the edge of the frame. And let me see, this is, again, looking eastward on Ricardo Drive, another drive would extend up this way and reach a home site that's out of the frame. So now, this is a kind of project of a scale and a setting that would require review under the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. The county contracted directly with Denise Stuffing Associates, private firm, to prepare this document, and what resulted was a mitigated negative declaration, which found that there would not be significant environmental impacts result from this project as long as mitigation measures that are in the document are observed. And this document went out for comment by members of the public and other agencies. And as for other agencies, the most significant comment we got was about biological mitigation. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service had something to say about that and wanted more specificity and clarification on the mitigations. And so that's in the conditions of approval. And then we had other comments that were from the public that were generally outside the CEQA review, but the main one that was especially relevant to this was on road maintenance. And this is more about the project itself, not so much about a CEQA issue, just about the project itself. And the concern was about whether Ricardo Drive would be. And the concern was about whether Ricardo Drive would be maintained in a fair way to the necessary degree. And so county staff came up with language that you find in Condition 30, and also, I think, well, first I'll talk about, first I'll talk about the internal street. It would be maintained by the Community Facilities District, the county-wide entity where new developments pay into a pool of funds that go toward the maintenance of, of roads such as this. So this would need to be part of that. As for Ricardo Drive, it's used by the, it's used by the neighborhood, of course, by several property owners and residents outside of the subject property. What Condition 30 understands is that the, is that the neighborhood and all the users of Ricardo Drive would overall maintain Ricardo Drive. And some proportion of the cost would be assigned to each resident, each lot. And some of that, a proportionate amount, would be, under this condition, assigned to the subject property. And then that amount would be divided by six for the six new property owners there. And this is what county staff believes is proportional and reasonable for the maintenance of Ricardo Drive, the cost to be put on this subdivision. So, that's the project, and staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the staff report, hold a public hearing, and hear any proponents and opponents of the proposed project, and that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to approve tentative map subdivision, tentative subdivision map 0982, subject to the findings and conditions of approval included within the resolution. I can help answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Let's have a, let's open it for a public comment. Anybody wish to speak on this item?
Yes, my name is Andy Shaw Coron, and I've actually lived on Ricardo Drive since 1987, having purchased a property there in 1986. There have been a number of problems over the years because the county allowed the developers to do four-by-four-ing and never made it from the start, a major subdivision. And so, a lot of disjointed agreements regarding water, regarding road maintenance. And one of the consequences of that is that this parcel that's being developed now, the owner never helped develop the road in the first place. The other neighbors did the cost of developing the road, and they've never helped in maintenance of the road, including a little over a year ago when the culvert and the road was washed out by the high waters, and the rest of the community had to pay for rebuilding the base of the road and putting in, you know, new major culverts. And so we have a concern that, and we appreciate that the county has looked at, you know, kind of trying to push toward getting a road agreement so that we do maintain this road, so it's safe for everybody involved. I think that's a good thing. We do, originally, we understood that the county was asking that the road be widened, and that would require more base, you know, a wider base and regrading the hill. And we actually think that the road right now is far wider than the road that feeds into it, Coal Road. Coal Road is little more than a one-lane road at this point, and Ricardo is actually fairly generous, and you saw that from the pictures. So we would prefer that the county actually urge the developer to just do a job of resurfacing, you know, repaving that road for the length of their property, and, you know, bringing that up to some decent standard because it has had problems being maintained, being that that property didn't participate in maintaining it. And just regrading it would not only minimize the amount of new asphalt and new drainage because you've got a creek down there at the base, and that creek has flooded over the years. And so having more runoff would not be helpful if we were to widen those roads further. They're, as I said, they're quite generous as they are right now. And also, there are trees along that road, and there's a tree ordinance in this county, and I think if they just maintain that adequate road and try to remove as few trees as possible, it would be good for the environment. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and Mary Shaw Coron?
Let's see, I actually sent some pictures in, so I'm going to try to... Oh, okay, thank you. Let's see if I can find this quickly. So I, I wanted to make similar points, you know, that the, as you can see from the entrance, I didn't realize that you had some nice photos already. But this is the entrance, it's a very straight shot road, and really, as has been pointed out earlier, is quite wide. Let me see, how do I get to my next picture? Here's a picture of two vehicles passing, so I didn't realize you already had a picture like that. So I think that this is a win-win situation, you know, where this is a dead-end road. This is not a normal road, it's a private road, cul-de-sacs, no traffic goes through. I can understand your Public Works Department may have certain regulations for maybe wider roads because most roads in, like in town, for example, are thorough roads. People drive through to other streets and all over. This one, this very low traffic, we have like, I think, 23 homes back there, and now we're getting a few more. So I think that it's unnecessary to widen it. What it needs is maybe the trees on the side trim. I personally want to preserve as many of the, these are native live oak trees, many of them. And I think it would actually be a win-win for the developer because there is an embankment, if I can get to the next picture here, that is, see, this is the embankment that would have to be cut, and those small trees that are like 15 years old, I walk almost every day and have seen this, they would have to be removed because I think the current width, when we talked to the Public Works Department, they said those would have to be pretty much all removed on that side. And this is another shot, so, of the trees. And, and you can see it's a pretty big hillside. To remove a lot of that earth and add, I think they were saying, is it four, six feet or so for the base, and then widen the pavement, is going to be very expensive for the developer. So we think it's a win-win to just repave that road because that would make the, I'm here actually representing my neighborhood. We all had a meeting, and everyone agreed on this letter to all of you, which is in your packet, which says, you know, we'd like to just ask the developer to make up for the fact that they never helped pay for the road. Now, now they're going to be making quite a bit of money, you know, developing these parcels. If they could just compensate us for the building of the road and things like that, and not minimize the cutting down of trees, we would be happy. The other thing I wanted to mention is Carnaro's Creek. This creek goes down to Carnaro's Creek, and it really should be restored, the one that's on the Roth property, and should be replanted with trees. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Alan Andrade, project engineer. And speaking tonight, kind of with a lightheart, both Mary and Andy made good points about this potentially being a win-win for the neighborhood. Want to applaud county staff, especially Michael Kelly, in carrying this through and getting a list of conditions that's comprehensive and addresses all the concerns that were raised during the process and effectively mitigates, I believe, mitigates any issues that were of importance, health, safety, and the fuel, and the respect to the neighbors who live in that environment right now. So, the point that Michael made with regard to the road maintenance and including the new cul-de-sac as a part of a CFD is spot on. The CFD gives the, the ability for the county to actually accept the road and gather funds from those people that benefit from the roads as a part of a direct fee on their tax bill. So it's not like this development is being a drain on the coffers of the county. It's actually self-sufficient and funded by itself. I believe we could include the portions of Ricardo Drive along this frontage in the CFD as well. And I think that's the map that Michael pointed out, we showed all the 23 lots in the neighborhood. This would eliminate all the kind of bickering and problems that were with the existing maintenance agreements. I think it's, it's written in the conditions that the project is going to facilitate that. And, you know, really, you can be guaranteed that the issues had in the past with maintenance and getting people to pay for things is off the table and solved. That's definitely a win-win. With regard to the widening, the comments on the widening is, as Michael pointed out, and then as the pictures visibly showed, is there sufficient room for two cars to pass? The, the cross-section shown on the tentative map with the whis are relevant specifically to the county's standard road width requirements. The county engineer has the discretion to allow for deviations and circumstances where we could protect trees. The developer and myself as the engineer are willing to work with the county engineer to make sure that we provide a safe width, a, a road that is in good shape and safe and available for all the users of that, funded and maintained through a mechanism that will exist in perpetuity. And, you know, really, if we were going to modify anything based on the comments I heard tonight, it would be just to allow us to deviate slightly from the county road standard width requirement to facilitate saving trees and minimizing excess grading when it's not warranted for health or safety purposes. I'm here to answer any questions that you have from an engineering perspective, and the property owner's here as well, if you'd like to hear her say anything.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Is there a driveway that will go on to Ricardo Drive?
There's two single driveways that go on to Ricardo Drive, and a cul-de-sac that serves four parcels off of Ricardo Drive. A total of six new parcels. The existing house and outbuildings, et cetera, are all served off of Coal Road in the same manner they currently are served.
The, the upper driveway, is that in the vicinity of the trees?
Can we bring up a map on the screen, and I could point it out?
Okay.
Yeah, so, so we have a number of lots that maybe we can describe which driveway to which lot you're interested in, and then we can discuss that.
Lot four. Between, between lot one and what, lot four, you've got a driveway that comes down to Ricardo. Is that correct?
Between lot one and lot four, that is a common cul-de-sac that serves lots four, two, three.
She wants to know if that's where those two small oak trees were.
It's in the vicinity, but we'll, we'll modify to minimize any need to remove a native tree. So when we talk about native trees, I'd like to just kind of confer with you and ensure you that if there's a chance to move the road a few feet one direction or the other, is, we will definitely do that to accommodate saving a native tree. If it's a tree that is problematic, I think there is one that's, that's...
It's not going to be recorded.
Right, so, so a tree that, you know, typically a tree that has a trunk diameter of 12 inches or greater is something that will manipulate the design to accommodate saving that tree, provided the county engineers onboard that it's a safe means of, you know, not making the road so narrow that it causes another problem. The road will not be any narrower than it is right now, and widening would only take place in spots where it's not, just not detracting from the scenic natural beauty of the existing trees and slopes.
And, and there, you're talking about the cul-de-sac road?
No, with Ricardo Drive specifically. The cul-de-sac has already been designed to avoid the trees and meanders.
Oh, it has, it has, okay, okay.
It meanders in that curve of linear nature so that the, the grading slopes, et cetera, avoid the drip lines of those existing native trees.
Okay.
Yeah, so the cul-de-sac is in a position to miss trees, and then the curve kind of swings so that it misses that tree that's there just opposite the driveway for lot two where it comes off the cul-de-sac.
Okay, great. Because our oaks are extremely important, especially in that area where there's been some denuding, so to speak, of, of the space.
I, I love them too, and every project that I work on, we're diligent, diligently to make sure that we maintain trees that have, you know, been there for 20, 30 years and established themselves to a point where, you know, they're priceless. You, you can't just, you can't just plant a new one and make it take its place. So we'll be diligent in ensuring that those trees are protected during construction, and will be able to survive long-term.
Yeah, I notice here where the, during grading and excavation, you're protecting the trees and all that has been nicely written in there.
Yes, and, you know, that's, county staff really did a good job with, you know, we have a significant number of conditions, but really, you know, when you're talking about developing kind of a pristine hillside within the guidelines of the county general plan and zoning ordinance is, we want to give all respect to those native species that are there and make it, you know, mesh with the current, the current natural state that it's in, and also have it blend in with the rest of the parcels that are developed to the same density and kind of, you know, finish out the neighborhood to a certain extent.
Commissioners, no?
No questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
He had to answer a bunch of questions.
I know. So upon seeing this, this project, my initial reaction was it, it looked great. Then upon talking to Mike Kelly in his office, he talked about widening the road, and I thought, wow, we're going to lose 30 trees. If we lose 30 trees, let's hope that the property owner and developer are in for replacing some trees, and that's another ordinance I wish you'd look at because in Monterey, it's two-for-one. San Benito is barely one-for-one. But now, I hear this term CFD, which I never heard, I didn't see it in the report. I don't understand it, I don't know what it is. I, I don't want to go back to my neighborhood and say that the Planning Commission just proved that, approved that we have to pay something more for the county to come to fix the road, which it's been a private road for as long as I've been there. And the county, when we asked them to fix the culvert, which was two three-foot pipes, where we had to fix it because we couldn't get out, it's a dead-end street, county said, no, it's a private road. I'm like, okay, so we collected our money and paid for this and fixed the road, and we asked the Roth for money, and they said, no, it's not our easement. Well, it is your easement. So we got a major conflict here. I, I am opposed to paying a CFD, whatever that is, I don't even know what it is. I, I would ask you to table this, so we go back to our community and, and figure out what a CFD is, and, and if the county wants to start maintaining our road, great, but the county's got a lot of roads to maintain, and, and they're barely starting to catch up a little bit. Coal Road has been, you know, I don't have to tell you about our roads. I mean, we're working to try to do it. So really, I, I ask you to table this so that we can go back to our neighborhood because I don't know what a CFD is, I did not see it in the agenda. I just heard about it tonight. And I don't think it's fair to me or my community for you guys to approve something that we had no clue on what was coming up, so, thanks.
Thank you.
I am Elizabeth Caldwell, and I am the daughter of my parents who bought the property originally, and the trustee of the Roth family bypass trust. My parents have been longtime residents, as well as my family of San Benito County. Purchased the property in 1973, and I do appreciate my neighbors being here, and I want to clear up anything that you don't understand because I know you didn't get there until 1987. But my father did write a check, the Dick Sedlecak, for $37,000 back in 81 to develop Ricardo Road.
Excuse me, can you face the commission, please?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, a little nervous, I'm sorry. Anyway, and let's just go to your concerns right now before I move on, which is, you know, I definitely want to work with the neighbors proactive on trees and any small oaks that we could even maybe replant if they have to be moved, maybe we could relocate those trees. And as far as the road, I just wanted to know that we did pay. The Walters at that time did not contribute, and that's what you're talking about with Dante Roles. So, because at the time we were using the road part of it, as far as the culvert went, at that time, nothing was operating at the farm.
Excuse me, direct your, to the commission, please.
Okay.
Okay?
And at that time, on the culvert, with the last gentleman that spoke, we weren't accessing or using, we haven't used the farm. we weren't accessing or using, we haven't used the farm. I moved my father with me to Virginia back in two thousand and five. And the farm had gone by the wayside, that time has come and gone. But they loved living there and it was quite a place for us and our family for a long time. This subdivision did not come about as a development, but more as part of the trust that my family, my mom and dad, wanted each one of their children to be able to build a home on the property. And my sister resides at the property now on the lower portion and she's disabled. We'd like to be able to build her a home there so she can stay because that's really our only option for her at this point and my other brother would like to build on the property. I myself would like to stay and keep probably the lower part, but that's another story. I just wanted to let you know that the subdivision was not for the purpose of profit, but simply for the purpose of dividing it amongst the family members. And it's been a long time, I'm really happy to be here. We started this project in two thousand and seven. And I also wanted to thank the hard work of the San Benito Planning Commission, especially Michael Kelly and Tavon Brown, as well as Ellen Andretti. And also, my father was in fact appointed to your very board back in the early nineties and served it with pride and for San Benito County and its residents. And anyway, I hope that we can get it done as far as the road goes. I think that the Dante Robles people that are currently not contributing will contribute and want to contribute. They just do not want to be part of the original development done by Dick Sedleczek back in the eighties that has those twenty-three homesites that are beyond Dante Robles and our project.
Okay, thank you.
But we're all willing to contribute.
Thank you. Any more speakers?
Just a point of clarification, that the CFD is a maintenance mechanism that would not apply to Ricardo Drive, but it would apply to the new private road inside. Instead of them having to form a homeowners association or craft an individual road maintenance agreement, that the county created the structure within the last year, year and a half for a community-wide CFD. And it's a financing mechanism for services so that there is a maintenance mechanism. But that wouldn't apply. It's not proposed to apply to Ricardo. And so I also heard a proposal this evening that, you know, how about make Ricardo public up to a point and then it goes private again? I think I heard that and that would be problematic because if we're going to make, if Ricardo was to become a public road, we'd probably have to see that it was fully improved county development standards, curb, gutter, sidewalks, setbacks, and then we've got the conflict with the trees and everything. And I'm not hearing that as the spirit of really what the neighborhood wants nor the subdivider. In fact, I've even heard that the pavement width curb-to-curb in there is probably sufficient. But how about, you know, a new top or something that's across the frontage? So I don't know what the cost would be or whether it's a bartering thing, but it doesn't feel like the neighborhood wants really the, nor finds the utility or the need for such urban-level improvements on Ricardo Drive. Just want a nice non-pot-hold finished surface is what it sounds like and keeping the trees. So I heard that this evening. So some of that would be a little counter to the conditions laid out or suggested by the engineering department, but I think within your purview to give guidance on how you'd like to see that finished. What was the other question that was raised? Yeah, so there's tree preservation and an intent on the developer that if there is a tree where it looks like we've got a road design right now that they're planning on moving it, moving it to just... Thank you, I just got carded.
Thank you, Tavon. Public hearing? Bring it to the commission, Michael, you have something to add or?
No, only if you have questions for me.
Any questions?
Oh, see, he's the respectful one, I just jabber.
It's your show, Valerie.
Yeah, through the chair. The CFD, I believe, has been clarified by Tavon.
Yes.
And so that the new section or the section that would be on the map here that belongs to Ricardo Drive or that's facing Ricardo Drive would not need to be widened. That's what I'm hearing is more than likely?
Ricardo, you mean Ricardo itself, not the, yeah, Ricardo itself. From what I see in the standards, it is, as Tavon mentioned, curb-to-curb sufficient width as it is right now.
And it was constructed during a time when that was sufficient as well?
I don't know exactly when it was constructed. But as for, as for actual pavement width, drivable, usable width, as far as I'm aware, it's sufficient right now.
Yeah, the road looks pretty wide.
At least considering that it's a private road. It might get some other examination if it were a public road.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, I find that everything's been addressed as far as the concerns of the property owners. I believe Dodd, I'm sorry. That the property owner of the development is happy? Just wanting to, I think our property owner wants to just confirm that monies were provided early on in the Ricardo Drive and that she feels like she is moving in an equitable way with the new development and with the persons involved with Ricardo Drive and their properties. So with the trees being addressed, I think that that's extremely good. What I'm wondering is the water system? We've got adequate water there? Is that correct?
Yeah, the measurement was taken of the water supply and found to be sufficient for the number of lots.
Great, that's great. And the septic, each lot will have its separate septic system?
Yes, that's right.
I have no further questions. Parkland dedication is in lieu of, let's, right?
Let me look at the exact...
The subdivider shall be required to dedicate land, pay a fee in lieu thereof, or a combination of both, page six of fifteen.
Okay, right, okay, there we are. That's right. That's the standard condition, the way it's written, and that comes from the ordinance. What we would expect to see is, from the ordinance, that fair market value is available from the assessor's office. And the ordinance contains a formula based on how many new units are to result from this development. And we take the land value, combine it with the new number of units and population to result from that and we get a fee to be generated. But that is using fair market value at some point in the future. So I don't have a number to give right now.
Point zero-one-five per residence acres.
Right, acres, yeah. We, yeah, the formula is written to provide a certain number of acres. But the in lieu fee is based on the fair market value of what, if those acres were found on this property right now, what proportion of the fair market value of the land would relate to that amount of acreage for parkland? And that becomes the fee.
I don't think I have any further issues.
Commissioners, any more?
I guess my just comment or concern about is that more of a procedural and on a policy level for the ordinance. So we got a lot of information and I think we're kind of all on board in terms of coalescing the different needs of the different communities. But seeing that this ordinance, the way that it is written, would that comprise all of those comments that were mentioned today in terms of, you know, kind of bridging those gaps? Or would we have to, would a new ordinance have to be drafted or edited? Or is the ordinance as is able to move forward with the comments that were expressed here tonight?
With regard to which part of?
Let me help on that. For, if one of the commissioners is willing to make a motion to approve, please specify the degree of finish that you are intending for Ricardo Drive. Because right now there's language about needing to dedicate right-of-way, which doesn't change the landscape, but it changed ownership and dedication or the dedication of the capacity in the future for it to be widened. The land would already be reserved. But there's language in here about paving half of the Ricardo at twenty-four feet versus frontage improvements and things like that. So just express your intent. Because if you just adopt it like this, they're obligated to go out there and, you know, make it probably look more, make it look more urban than, I think, the context of what's happening here. What the sentiments have been expressed, if somebody wanted to make a motion to approve. So I'll try to be more helpful if you have any questions.
So I had just a question or clarification, just in terms of one of the conditions of the approval is number thirty, Ricardo Drive maintenance. So it sounds like going forward, we are requiring that the property owners going forward would participate in the maintenance work. Is the assumption here is that they would just be included in the existing agreement that exists right now? Or is there a change to that agreement that condition thirty would suggest?
We had to ride it tight enough that there was responsible parties so that we knew there'd be proportionality here, but we had to ride it loose enough so that it would just work out. I mean, the way the thirty is triggered is like at such time that they're ready to go with fixing the road that this applicant is a participant in that process. And I guess they divvy out costs at that point. So I don't know how to get more specific than that.
I guess I'll ask a more specific question. So if we were to go ahead and approve this, is the property owners on Coal Road now part of that maintenance agreement as of tonight? If we were to approve that?
Well, Coal's the one that passes by quickly.
Understand.
Okay.
So the property owners right now are on Coal Road that are looking to subdivide. So as condition of approval, we're saying now you're going to be a part of maintaining Ricardo Drive?
That's what thirty is.
That's what it says, right? So I guess my question is, are we saying that as of tonight, now they are included in that maintenance agreement? Or is the maintenance agreement not applicable until the six subdivided units are completed and then they are included in that maintenance agreement? It's really around timing of when?
Correct.
When are we saying that?
And actually, number twenty-two speaks that the applicant shall enter into a deferred improvement agreement. So that's basically allowing the discretion of the county engineer to weigh in when it's time.
For Coal Road, that is.
For...
Yeah, the deferred improvement agreement is for Coal Road.
Okay.
Because my understanding is there's needs to improve the road today and the community members have expressed concerns, hey, we need to do some work on that. And currently, the owners on Coal Road don't participate in that agreement in terms of maintaining the road. So I'm just trying to understand, what's the timing of when? When does that turn on and say, oh, yes, now you're contributing either another six or seven units? Or is it one unit or, you know, how does that work?
Coal Road is a public road, so it would be...
No, I understand that, I'm just saying that the current owners reside on Coal Road, that's...
Well, yeah, the existing construction is on Coal Road. The development would be on Ricardo Drive.
Understand.
And to clarify, there is not actually a maintenance agreement to, well, there are multiple maintenance agreements in different locations. So it's a little bit disunified when it comes to the maintenance. And that's in part why this is written the way it is, because there isn't really a maintenance agreement to join. And so this is to, for the applicant and future owners to work with the neighbors and participate.
So we're saying in order to get approval for the permits, et cetera, going forward, they have to have an agreement with the existing homeowners that, for whatever reason, they have multiple agreements in terms of maintaining Ricardo Road. And they need to come up with an agreement in terms of what that maintenance agreement is going to be going forward before they're approved to build? Is that how I understand that?
Well, it's kind of open-ended. I could imagine it conceivably could result in an actual maintenance agreement. But do you have something?
Introduce yourself, please. This is Michael Zaiman. With county council's office. As far as we can tell, there's no comprehensive maintenance agreement that all the landowners belong to. That's one of the reasons, as Tavon pointed out, it's written like that. There isn't going to be an agreement tonight. But if and when all of the property owners using Ricardo Drive decide to get together to perform maintenance, then these six lots will pay their proportionate share on a per-lot basis, even though they're only using the shortest segment of Ricardo Lane to contribute to the maintenance.
And is it six lots or is it seven lots?
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
I just want to be clear.
Six lots plus remainder.
Six lots plus remainder.
Sure.
The remainder is a different story.
So if and when that all the property owners ever get together and decide they're going to contribute and maintain, then they would be required. But there's no requirement for an agreement to be crafted that everybody has to join prior to this being approved.
Okay, I think I understand.
Got it?
Clear as mud.
That was a good question.
Yeah. Any more questions, commissioners?
No, I don't think so. Were there any further comments that need to be made?
Public hearing is closed already, so.
Right, right.
We could get a motion.
Okay.
Do you hear a motion?
I move to approve with the, what, exceptions? With the understanding that an agreement will be put together by the parties involved in order to maintain Ricardo Drive.
I think that was clarified, there's no agreement right now.
That's already clarified, okay. Then do we need to consider?
No, because that's only if and when maintenance on the road is decided. This ordinance, correct, if I'm wrong, right? The ordinance isn't necessarily saying that, it's just leaving that freedom and liberty in the future for maintenance to happen on that private road that there in all parties would then participate. It's not necessarily a, it's more of a preventative measure for future than an intervention now is what I am seeing the ordinance has drafted.
I just wasn't sure if it was already in the document.
No, there's no agreement on Ricardo.
Okay.
It's...
Then I move to approve.
Well, I think to Tavon's point, that there are some adjustments we need to make to the existing proposal, given the width of the road, so...
All right.
Should I give it a shot?
Give it a shot.
I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-nineteen dash X, a resolution of the San Benito County Planning Commission to approve tentative subdivision map TSM zero-nine-eight-two, a proposal for a tentative subdivision map of six lots plus one remainder parcel, including all findings and conditions with the exception that Ricardo Drive will not exceed its current width.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I ask for clarification? There's... There's, okay, Coal Road, frontage, what you're meaning is the, the curb-to-curb pavement, that that not change?
Correct, per the residents' requests.
But if we had dedications or other things, you're not talking about that, you're just talking about the physicality of the road.
Correct.
Thank you.
Condition 22B.
How is that?
I don't think, the resurfacing of the road.
Yeah, so 22B means, um, if you, if you did this, you'd have, uh, a new-looking road from the center line and on the side of the subdivision property, and that there's not a responsibility here for the other side of the road on the way out. That's the way it's written. And generally, when subdivisions come in, it's generally, each side is, each property improves, you know, half of the road up to the center line, um, but the other parties aren't at the table right now. And so, I think that's what one of the community members said earlier, is, you know, "How about instead of all this physical construction, you just lay some nice pavement over the whole thing?" Um, but I, what's happening here is that would be, I believe, the other half of the road is owned by other po, other persons. Would you clarify that with me, um, Engineer Androd? Is who, who owns the other half of the road opposite the, the proposed subdivision? Several property owners, correct? For, which includes all the 20 people to the east and everything, so it gets complicated. So, your, your leverage is strong with the half-width, but, you know, the visible thing that you're going to get in the field, uh, might look a little different than your expectations if it's only half the, half the street. And part of the language in number 30 is that, uh, Ms. Caldwell would be in for her proportion, and you're going to have 23 other payers involved? No? I'm sorry.
Just, just pave it, just resurface it two inches of asphalt.
Yeah, yeah. I think that that was understood.
I think that's, uh, in that.
Yeah, we gotta change the motion, then.
We gotta change the motion.
I thought that was 30 covered that.
Yeah.
Shall be required to pay the proportionate share.
Okay. It was 30.
So, so, so maybe we'll look, look to Michael to, to help clarify, so it's based on the comments that we've had and discussion that we've had, how would we modify the language in 22, whether it's, it's just B or, or A to?
Yeah.
If it's, if it's the full width of the road from where to where, you can't just say the entire road, that's an awfully long stretch, I would imagine, and that wouldn't be fair to the property owner to repave the entire roadway.
In front of it.
Well, we need some sort of delineation to make a.
Up to the property line.
Yeah, that, well, what's, what's gen, the practice is that it's what's along the frontage.
Okay.
That's considered proportional, the half, the half right-of-way, the half pavement, okay, construction is considered proportional.
To begin with, draw the last motion, and we got a new one.
Change that to full.
Yes.
Yes, to repave, yeah.
I'd like to amend my motion to make it the full width of the road along the property front, frontage that should be repaved. Isn't that what we just?
Yeah, is that the frontage?
We got council.
Through the chair, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
What we just said? The engineer said that, that the resurfacing might be a better word than repaving.
Yes.
I'll amend further to use the word resurfacing.
Yep.
I second that amendment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Because repaving would mean they would have to rip the whole road up.
Yeah.
And start again. Yeah, so they're just going to resurface it.
Okay. Yeah, I think that that's what was sorry.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah. But I think that the issue was already taken care of.
So, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Or, we're going to hear from the?
I was just wanting to catch you before you're out the door, if we can get your signature on the resolution from the first action, and then, uh, Mr. Kelly and I will revise the language on number B, uh, 22B, and we'll be passing by your office hopefully by Friday for the final language and signature.
All right.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
We had to be careful, we said.